United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with the ruling and justice.
We'll open the meeting up to public comment. No public comment on that. Okay, right into our special presentations this evening. Tonight we have recognition of our students of the month and we'll have a middle school bench conference presentation. So Joel, you want to go?
Hi. All right, so this month, we are very pleased to honor one of our fifth grade students. And you're going to see in a moment when she comes up here, she has the biggest smile that you've ever seen, and when you talk about her, she gets very embarrassed. But Riley, why don't you come on up? This is Riley Klein. She's one of our fifth grade students, and I have just some notes here from her fifth grade teachers, Mrs. Henry and Mrs. Super. They said that Riley is a studious fifth grade student, and throughout her day, she actively participates in her classes through interesting comments, and she always asked great questions to help further the understanding of the topic. In terms of her social interactions, Riley is selflessly helping her classmates on a daily basis. And we know that this time of year gets a little tense in fourth and fifth grade as spring comes around and there's drama. Riley is not part of that. She's actually helping to kind of keep the drama down. So thank you for that. We appreciate that every day. So she works with her classmates and tries to bridge gaps between friends during recess and specials. And she always comes to school every day, ready to learn. She's responsible, she's safe, and she's a big smiler. This is Riley. Yeah, stand right here.
All kinds of pictures.
Open it up so everybody can see her.
Hanee, you want to come up? This is Hanee Muhammad, and she is our student of the month for the middle school. Hanee is new to us this year, and this is her second year in the United States. She comes from Egypt. And she has managed to deal with that transition in a very graceful way. Sometimes, I don't know if anybody's traveled to a foreign country or hosted an exchange student, but those transitions and not learning about different cultures can be very difficult and very trying. Her teachers tell me that she's handled this with such great success and ease, and she's always very respectful in the classroom. She's developed friendships, she asks great questions. And one of the traits that we always attempt to develop in the middle school is overcoming obstacles. We want our students to be able to step up to the plate, overcome those obstacles, and be successful. It's a great training for being successful in the world, and Hanee embodies that. So congratulations.
Joel, come on up.
Our high school student of the month for March 2019 is Joseph Lyons. Hello, Joseph. I'm right over here. Thank you. Joe, a senior as a member of the high school SAT club and the National Honor Society. Joe played in the pros for five years, from seventh grade till ninth grade. And I'm proud to say that Joe is a volunteer firefighter and is currently working toward his EMT certification, which he should have by the end of June. I'm also told that Joe is working toward his 229 certification. Joe, can you tell us what that is?
The 229 certification is a series of classes for firefighters, from vehicle education to wild and fire repression, and accumulates for about 229 hours of training.
Impressive. Thank you. I wasn't about to try to explain that. Joe is accepted to the emergency management program at New Haven University, and his plan is to become a career firefighter. According to his teachers, Joe is described as respectful, ambitious, exceptionally capable, and competent. Science teacher, Mr. Lynn, said Joe is the ultimate dude.
Sounds like it.
That's why I had a quote. Joe is the ultimate dude. His English teacher, Ms. Meyer, which this sounds just like her too, Ms. Meyer said Joe is a real scholar in our college composition class. He works hard to understand the material and takes pride in his work. He's a real leader in our class, often supporting his peers in handling disagreements respectfully and with poise and maturity. Finally, Fire Chief Peter Miller said Joe is an outstanding kid who has complete control over his life, and we agree. Congratulations, Joe. Keep up the good work.
Good job, all of you. Thank you very much.
Again, on behalf of the entire board, we congratulate all our students of the month. It's a great honor for us as board members to be able to sit here and listen to the accolades that the building principals have for each one of those students. So it's amazing, and it's one of the proud moments that at least I have sitting up here on the board. So congratulations to all our students of the month. To the families, parents, school members. Hey, Dan, you're going to do present.
We got him. He'll just be one second, sorry.
No problem. You're up, Mr. Meyer. Trying to leave here.
I was just leaving. Okay. All right. This is all. Okay, there it is. Yeah, great. Okay. So first of all, I want to take a minute to thank Karen. She has been instrumental in putting this together with me. She is a data whiz. I'm telling you, her work and understanding with this has been so incredibly helpful, and she's a great find for us. Really helped us be, you know, track this data, get through it, make sense of it, move forward with it. Okay? So doing that, Karen and I talked about now that we're collecting all this data and working with it, it was really time to come and present to you and show you some of the ideas we have, where we are with some of the results, and then what we're doing to move forward.
Want me to do the forward plugging for you?
It was on. Yeah, I might have turned it back off. It's like the battery may be gone or something.
Want me to just do it manual for you? That'd be great.
Yeah, thank you. One of the things I've learned from Karen, as I've learned a lot from her about data, is the term triangulation. All right? And the example I would give of what triangulation means is my sister, who was in the U.S. Army and spent the last part of her career training National Guard units on how to triangulate radio signals and computer signals so they could be destroyed on benefit. You use three different points, you're able to find out exactly where that information is coming from, and then you can track it down. The same concept applies when we're working with data. If we can get three data points, we can hopefully more clearly pinpoint what our difficulty is and what our successes are. Okay. So, but before we get to that, purposes of why we were using data. The first, and what I really look at is informing instruction. All right? So that we can make appropriate decisions about how we are instructing our kids and what changes we need to make to that instruction. All right? And to do that, we have to be able to trust the data. And that's what we're really starting to be able to do by collecting this data, is really find ways to trust it. And certainly, one of our concerns about the state data is that the lack of number of kids that take the test leads us to not be able to trust that data as much. But when we're starting to add other data to that, we're finding ways to show it by triangulating it, showing where it is useful for us to use. Certainly, we want to look at tracking student progress. That's kind of self-explanatory, is that kid making progress towards our goals? We want to be able to report to parents, and we do that through report cards, we do that through parent conferences when we talk about STAR data, and we certainly do that when we send home the state report that was produced for us. And last, we want to be able to answer questions of reliability. Is, when we are able to triangulate that data, it can tell us, you know, are we trusting the data, what we're doing with it? And are the benchmarks that we make reliable? And is the STAR data giving or yielding information we want to use? So the three data points that we're really using, we're concentrating on are the four district-created math benchmarks that we use each year. There's four of them for the school year. The STAR math, in which we give three times during the school year, and then the New York State assessments, which are given once, as you know, during the school year. Pros and cons of the district-created benchmarks, I want to start with the idea that they're criterion-referenced, meaning that we set a criteria of how high we want students to go, and then we test them against that criteria to see if they've made that, if they've reached that point. All right? So we wanted to reach X, we test them, did they reach X? Okay? That criterion that we are using is based directly on the standards, Common Core standards that we have, that's where that information comes from. Other pros, certainly participation rate, almost every single kid participates, there's some exceptions, and I'll get to that a little later. The design of our benchmarks is similar to the state, so that gives us another way we can compare and look at the state data as well. They're given four times a year, and we have found a way, and I'm not going to get into it in this presentation, but to assure that there's rigor involved. I have a whole printout, and I can explain that to you, but it would take quite a bit of time, but be happy to sit and talk to anybody about that who would like to know more about it. Certainly, one of the cons is that only the fourth benchmark, the end one, the last one of the year, is cumulative. All right? And what we've done with the fourth benchmark is that 50% of that test is from the first three quarters of the year, and 50% is from the last quarter of the year, to give us the idea our students, have students retain the information. The STAR math, pros, highly reliable, meaning that is a statistical term, meaning if a student is given that test on different days, we should yield the same score. That's what reliability means. Unless they're sick or there's something going on in their life, we should see them score similar across those tests. It's given three times a year, I mentioned that already. Again, the participation rate is very strong. It yields a significant amount of data that we can use. We are only beginning to scratch the surface in using that data. And Karen is instrumental in helping us do that. The difference between this and our benchmark is this is a norm reference test, meaning that instead of having a criteria of how high we want to reach, this test says, given this math problem, the average student in this country is able to get this question correct in their fifth grade, fifth month, and then how do you compare to that average? That is what a norm reference test is. That is different than a criterion reference test. All right? It's important, and we select different types of tests to give us different types of information. Certainly, the cons, in some cases, could be over on the pros, because there's reasons that computer-based testing is an advantage. It's scored instantaneously for us. We don't have to score it by hand, but it's a different format for our kids at this point. The limited, what I said, the limited depth of testing, it can be as few as 20 minutes. The most I think one of our kids has taken to complete this test is one class period. So you wonder, is there enough questions to be able to yield the score they want? Although they do use computer-adaptive testing, that's the CAT, meaning not any single kid takes the same test. Once you get this question right, it bumps you up to the next level. If you get it wrong, it bumps you down. That's different for every student that takes the test. That's why it can yield so much data for us. And the format is different than the New York State assessments. Certainly, pros and cons for the New York State assessment. The fact that it drives consistent statewide curriculum standards, it's based on the Common Core standards, it's comparable, so we can look at how we're doing across the state, the region, the county. On the con side, it's only once a year. We know about the refusals, how that impacts us. Limited data release, we cannot get all the questions that they ask. That is a constant set, a piece of consternation from teachers. We want to be able to see the questions, but we can't see them all. We can see some, but not all of them. The length and complexity of the test, and then student buy-in, we know some of our students just do not buy in and take this test. Right? All right. This is where the results come in, and before you start looking at all this part down here, I need to explain some stuff to you. It's really important. All right? I'm going to start up here. We assign levels one, two, three, and four based on New York State testing. Those are the levels that New York State uses. All right? You know that level three and four are considered proficient, levels one and two are not. All right? Simple enough, as long as you look at the state scores here at the bottom. But to make this comparison, Karen and I had to make our own cutoffs as to what a level one for the math benchmark would be, and a level one for the STAR math would be, and level two and level three as well. So you have to know, those comparisons, Karen and I decided those cutoff levels. They're based in solid information. We didn't just throw a dart at the dartboard. We said, what would be a comparable level? We assigned those. I can get into that with you. Again, it would take some discussion. For this point, not take up way too much time for me to try to explain that. All right? Then, I certainly want you to look here. You can see the different tests that we used. This is benchmark one, the comparison, but if you go to the bottom, you'll see this is sixth grade, sixth grade, and you'll see that's fifth grade. That's because we have to use our current sixth graders, we had to use last year's state test. We don't have a sixth grade test for them yet. That's coming up, of course, the ELA in a couple weeks. Math next month. So that's a piece you have to know. Here, you can see the total number of students that took the test. And then here, the number of students that scored at that level, and then the percentage of the total that that is. So that gives you an idea of where we are with the different tests. I'll give you a second to take that in and see if you have a question about it. One more thing I did want to point out, this is the 2025 cohort, our current sixth grade class. All right? And we're going to do seventh grade and eighth grade in a minute.
Let them remember what their cohort means.
Right, these are this, all this whole group of students together, that's why it's the same cohort for fifth grade, because that's their fifth grade test, but they're in sixth grade now. These students will graduate in 2025. Okay. I'm going to move on to what is now the next slide, which is again, still sixth grade. This is the second benchmark of the year that's already been given, and the second STAR administration, the winter STAR administration, and, but the same fifth grade math test, because we only have one of those. Now, you're going to see right here a significant drop in these scores across STAR. I think Karen could sit down and talk to you for an hour about why middle school scores in January, February drop, and STAR says that this happens, but that's a little disconcerting to look at at the moment, that our scores went down drastically there. And however, they did not drop in our benchmark. So we are certainly looking at that.
And I'm happy to discuss, if anybody wants to discuss further. They have 11 years of research STAR. They're, for some reason, the lowest, the lowest scores are always in June and February, and they're trying to figure out why. So when we started, we had to do the testing in February, it's supposed to be 60 days in between, and we started in November, October.
Okay, so then we're going to move to seventh grade.
It's a big jump in the number of kids being tested.
Can you back up one slide? You mean here? Here?
137 as compared to the slide before.
Drop back another slide. 108. We certainly struggled getting STAR off the ground for the first time, and we wanted to do it in September, we ended up in October, we missed a bunch of kids, we could not get them back in, we couldn't work out the schedule. The second time, certainly our second administration, we were like bang on, solved that problem. That's where that number changes. Okay?
And we have a schedule for next year always set.
We're already set to schedule for next year, because we want September, February, and May. All right? So one more, yeah? Here's the same information presented in, for our current seventh graders, their sixth grade math test. All right? And then the next slide would be again, the second benchmark, the second STAR administration, and the New York State sixth grade test. And again, you can see the drop in the STAR scores. Okay? And again, that's the 2024 cohort, seventh grade. This is the 2023 cohort, our current eighth graders, with the same information presented. First benchmark. And then the second benchmark and the second STAR. You want to flip one more, Karen? Again, a drop in the STAR scores again. We're, I'll talk about it at the end. One thing I do want to point out is there's some differences in these numbers. We do not have our students in the advanced placement eighth grade class take the benchmark assessment. They're in algebra. We do not double test them to give them another assessment. They're really beyond this point. So that's the difference in those numbers. But, and again, this was their seventh grade test, we only had 47 kids take the seventh grade state test last year. All right? Okay. Now, first of all, I need to correct this number that you see here as 21, is actually 24. Just a mistype, it's a 24. Oops, what happened there? Okay. All right. Now, what this is, again, cohort, 2023 cohort, 24, 25. Current sixth graders. Of the 37 kids that scored a one and a two on the math test in fifth grade, that are current sixth graders, on STAR, 21 of them scored a two or less. On our benchmark, 27 of them scored two or less. On STAR, 13 of them scored three or higher, and the benchmarks, 10 of them scored a three or higher. This is the same group of kids. All right? So we had 37 kids score, have a one or a two on the New York State test. On our benchmark, only 27 scored that low, and 10 of those kids, the same kids, scored a three or higher on the benchmark. It's an interesting piece of data that tells us maybe some kids are not buying in to the test. But I don't think that if you're truly a one or a two on the state test, that you can get a three or a four on the benchmark. They are not easy tests. And you can see that the same pattern follows in all three grades. There is, I assure you that there is significant rigor involved in both the STAR and both the benchmarks, to say that basically, that's impossible to do, to score that well and not be able to, and be a one. So I think this is a more accurate score. Questions about that?
I'm just curious, how close are the benchmark exams for the, like the time and the STAR exams administered? How close are they administered?
Remember the?
Yes, benchmarks in the middle school, they all hit January 15th.
That's right.
And STAR was the beginning of February. Most everybody did STAR between, we had the flu hit, and we had, we had the flu and we had some snow days, so between February 1st and March, I think 6th was the date, that's when we did STAR. We had to extend the testing because of the number of kids. And then between STAR testings, you have to have 60 days, otherwise you're, you don't have the reliability and the compatibility with the testing. You have to use a special formula to determine what it is.
Yep. Okay. All right. Now, that's the end of kind of the results. Now I want to tell you what we're doing with them. If you will flip them that side. This is an example of an actual, it's a sample of an actual item analysis from one of our benchmarks given to one of our classes. And there is a key over here. Three is only one or two questions. One, zero to one answer, wrong. White is two to six, yellow, seven to nine, red, 10 or more. I want you, if you go across the top, that is a single student, so this student missed one question. All right? This student missed 11 questions. If you go down, this is a single question. On this question, five students missed that. Oh, I'm so sorry.
That's okay. It's working now. Or just didn't want to work. There you go.
If you go down, five students missed this question. Every student got this question right. 11 students missed this question. So if you look at that quickly, you can see, the first thing that jumps out in you is, what happened with question 20? What standard does that assess? Why, how come our students didn't learn it? And what are we going to do to change that? Okay? And then the same thing here with question 10. But also with other questions, yellow, same thing, we need to know what's going on. And here, and if I take one teacher who teaches eighth grade, and we gave the same benchmark, and we use the same benchmark across the whole grade with another teacher, and teacher A had 11 wrong, and teacher B had one wrong, I want teachers talking to each other and saying, what did I do that taught this standard differently than you did? So that's one of the things that we're doing, but it also clearly shows our progress monitoring for students. Okay? So I would take question 11, question 10, that there was 11, and I would pop question 11 in here, and then I would have teachers start asking these questions about that question. So we can try to determine what was the breakdown. Okay? And this is something Karen developed that we're beginning to use. That is our, this would be called a root cause analysis, and that is our information-informing instruction. That is what we're doing with this.
Weren't you doing item analysis in years prior?
We have done item analysis in years prior, but the way we're now collecting the information for the benchmarks, and Karen's whiz ability to put it together, puts it right out there for us, like that. Where before, it was always a process of trying to gather the data, get the test corrected, get the answers, find somebody that could put it in a spreadsheet, right? She just boom, 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 and it's done. Right? And then we have it, it turns around very quickly, and we can have a conversation right away.
Some within 24 hours. Kindergarten was 24 hours.
I thought we get that data given to us, item analysis.
Not from our own tests.
From the test.
From STAR, yes, we get that, but that's new to us this year. We've started STAR this year.
Yeah, the state, there was a big controversy with the state exams, they weren't even giving that to administrators, teachers at one point.
And plus, we don't get this, we give that test in May or April, we don't get the results until August. We're talking about it, and we've already, you know, those students are already moved into the next grade on the next material. Right?
And it's nice, the teachers are having wonderful conversations from kindergarten through eighth grade about math, and they're looking at the question going, is it, do we leave it as it is because it's something? Because it's something the kids need to know? Is it something the way the question is worded? Or is there something else that we need to look at that we're not currently looking at? And it brings up their questioning, we get all the questionings, which is what we're doing with math right now. And then we start digging for analysis and answers.
And what we're being able to accomplish now is teachers not saying, well, it's this about the test, and it's that about the test. Well, not enough kids take the test. Well, not enough. We're, we're just saying, this information, and looking at it three different ways, is telling us that that, you cannot make that argument, and we need to look at what's breaking down. And make the change.
Good conversations. They really are, they've gotta be real.
They have to be.
Because we're trying to get to the bottom of that phenomenon.
Absolutely.
If I log into the school meter, we know what we see.
Absolutely.
But in this year, you're taking what you do and make it better than next year. And this is probably the first time, I would say that we are, you're really keeping right in pace with the testing and being able to do this analysis, you know, almost immediately.
Almost immediately.
Very nice.
Okay?
Root cause analysis, very nice.
Next, are we to the?
It's based on the Harvard model, on some of the research, data wise.
With the benchmarks, is that the reading level similar to that of Star?
It, it, to that of the Star?
Yes.
Let, let's say, in 6th grade, I'd like to get the rigor just a little bit higher, but the readability's there. Um, I'd like to get the math just a little bit harder. We had talked about this. 7th and 8th grade add on, um, your P value, which is, um, how hard the test is for our kids, almost a perfect bell shaped curve. So I, I really do believe the rigor is there. And we're kind of circulating the test. I'm trying to get them to spiral the test a little more, so that there's two or three questions that are from the test before, to see if they're retaining the information.
Now, we're in a new benchmark here, right? All of our schools are in good standing as a breakdown.
Yes.
So the work is to try to really get in front of this stuff, and look at those subgroups and try to maintain into the next year.
Yes. Okay. I think we're, yep. What we're doing now, again, and we've had some of this discussion already. We certainly, as Karen just said, we're continuing to refine and use those benchmarks to provide us that information. Okay? And by refining, we, we wanna do a little bit more work with 6th grade and what Karen just mentioned. Okay? Where we certainly wanna look at more deeply to understand Star, because it provides a lot of data for us. For instance, Karen showed us one piece of information very recently, and it, it was very clear by this data that many of our kids struggle with understanding numbers.
Oh, yes, yeah, number fluency.
Number fluency, which is critical.
Numbers based on.
To doing fractions, to anywhere you go in math. Right? So, but, we're waiting for more information from our benchmarks and from the state test to confirm that. And then we're gonna look at how would we go about making a change to, to, to impact that positively. Alright? We're, we're gonna have more thorough comparisons, because the most important benchmark course is the end of the year, the last one. The most important Star is the end of the year, the last one. And then we'll have the state in August. So we'll be able to hit September ground running, hit the ground running, thank you, with making those comparisons, seeing what we need to do with those kids. And then how are we gonna change instruction? Okay? That's where we're going, that's our ideas. Questions?
There's, uh, is there a communication in that school to increase the number of participants on the state assessment? Cause I believe the data shows if the most of your kids in the class take the test, you tend to do better.
I think that's probably correct. Yes, we're, we continue to work with teachers to encourage that participation. I, I'm, it's pretty difficult to go to a parent and say, you know, you're adamant about your kid opting out of the test. Um, here's why it's important. I think we've talked with Tom lately, he's, you know, we're putting together a letter that's going out to parents as well. Right? Or it's gone out already? So we're taking those steps. To, you know, and I think if all of our kids take the test, I think we would show stronger scores.
This year also, the state is gonna be, um, looking at ELA in math. So if the kids take day one, opt out on day two, it will be reported in, um, the data. I'm not sure how they're gonna do that yet, but that's how they're looking at it. Um, not, that's different for science and for the NICE SLAB. Those will have to be all or nothing, but the math and the ELA, they're gonna have the days for that.
Well, I think they're expecting, if you have real poor participation rates, they're gonna wanna see what your plan is to improve them. It's better to get in front of that.
Our numbers improved, we're in good shape with taking the test.
Yes?
They've been improving.
This was, um, communication with families, how are the benchmarks and Star assessments communicated?
The benchmarks are communicated through the report cards. It's part, they, they're used to give us part of the grade. And then that's reported that way. The Star at this point, because it's new to us, what we're doing is talking with stu, parents when they come and prepare conferences. We'll be in a discussion if we're going to print something and send it home to them. We have to make that decision. We can also, I believe, load it into the database for school tool, I think it can go there. Um, so those are things we're talking about and considering at this point. We wanna, you know, we wanna make the right decision with that, we don't wanna rush into it.
We're using it more for instructional planning at this point, and for designing future benchmarks in curriculum management.
You said, um, certain seventh graders who've gone to algebra are not taking, which exam are they not taking?
They don't take the benchmark.
Oh, they're not taking the benchmark.
Correct. That's why there's a difference between the number of kids that took Star and the number of kids that take the benchmark.
No, they don't take the state exam, they're taking the region.
Right, okay.
Right, and they don't take the state exam either, because they take, yes, that's absolutely correct.
And it would be additional four days that they would lose of an already accelerated curriculum.
Right, right, I was wondering if, if actually taking the exam might refresh them and then, but they're taking the region.
Yes, they're taking the regions, and it's, yep. Anything else?
Thank you very much, Karen. Thank you very much, and, uh, we're moving in the right direction. Thank you. It's good to see there's a plan, there's a good plan.
Oh, that was very exciting.
Yes, very, very. Yes.
Okay, uh, moving on, acceptance of reports. Here we are on the Board of Education, upon the recommendation of superintendent, approving and acknowledging and reviewing the following reports. Our meeting minutes, February 19th, 2019, March 5th, 2019. And our attendance report, February 2019. Another motion, please, motion by my second bias. Discussion?
There were a few changes that I had that we're just working through, some technical issues with the changes in the site.
It just like grammar, something that was missing.
And like a location of a motion, no, adult.
Okay, anything else? Hold up a favor?
Aye.
Vote. Prepare the curriculum and instruction or principal's report, Joel?
All right, so, um, just a couple of updates to the principal's report. Harris' reading partners, the PTA president is really reaching out to try to get as many people involved in that program this year. So board members, if you are available, please, her email is in my report. Reach out to her, because she is trying to book, um, readers to go into classrooms. So she wanted me to express to you that she would love to, uh, to see all of you come on out if you're at all possible to be part of PAR. An exciting part of PAR this year is we're gonna kick off with the Star Lab. So the library, all the tables are gonna be moved out, and the dome will be raised in the, in the library uh, for the first six days of PAR as a kickoff. Um, and the theme is, is, oh, I just lost it. Reading, uh, reading to outer space, or taking off with reading, or something along that line with rockets and, and space. So, um, the, the Star Lab presenter will be there, and will go through the library classes for the six day cycle. So every child will get an opportunity to be
Just reexamine this one.
In the, uh, in the, in the Star Lab, which is gonna be very exciting. It'll tie in our, our science push that we're in the process of, of working on now in the, at the elementary level, and actually at all levels. And it'll also, uh, something different for the kids to look forward to. Back in February, the end of February, we did the NATE, which I, uh, I gave you the copy of the letter that we sent out. Uh, there were very few, uh, very few students who were chosen, opted out of that. So I think we had two or three, but a couple of absences. They only come the one day to give that. That's a representative test of, uh, of students at that level. Two ladies came up that morning, we were hoping for no snow. Luckily, we didn't have a delay, cause that would've really thrown a wrinkle into the schedule. But, um, just some nice things, and I, I saw Mrs. Welch shortly after that. The, the women who came up to do that, uh, assessment were so impressed by not only our students, but the cleanliness of our school. These are the things that they said, the school is so clean, you gave us adequate space. We didn't have to sit on a cart in a hallway. And I, I was like dumbfounded that anyone would bring in an outside organization and, and subject them to that. But I guess that's what they're used to when they go to other places. And then the highlight, and Mrs. McCarthy's here, I told her the other day about this, but I think it's important that all of you know, these two ladies wanted to get on the road early because of the weather. So they got here, didn't have breakfast, wanted to know where the nearest place was to go for breakfast. And I, I said, you know, if you don't wanna leave the school, because it is tricky to kinda get out and get back, you could check out our cafeteria, and they kinda groaned. But then they went in, and they were extremely pleased with what was in there as offerings that day. So, and then they complimented, they, not only did they have breakfast in our cafeteria, they also had lunch. And raved about, not only the employees.
Maybe all over the state.
And they go everywhere.
Yeah, they go everywhere.
And, you know, I was like, I have to take it as real, because they went on and on about how beautiful the school was. And all I gave them was an empty room. So, uh, so it was, it was quite, it was quite a good experience. Um, some students took the, uh, the part of the assessment on tablets that they brought, the, the NATE individuals brought themselves, they were all charged up and ready to go. And, uh, some took it as paper and pencil, and that was all randomized through, um, through the federal government, through the, um, education department. And then, oh, so I got a nice little certificate that I have not hung up yet, because I want you to see it, but we'll hang this in our lobby, that we were participants in the NATE. And then finally, I'm being nicknamed like the clinkmeister or something, so. You've seen our wall, our wall is actually covered even more as of today. Like literally, 20 pictures came in this morning, I, I'm out of space. The students are really taking this seriously, not only because we're in a, a challenge to, to raise money, but they are really looking at what they're throwing away. Um, not all bottles are returnable, but they're all recyclable. So Snapple, not the wa, the water ones are returnable, but the Snapple iced tea or Lipton iced tea, those don't have the 5 cents deposit on it. But we've said to the kids, if you wanna still recycle them in those bags, cause Clay said it was okay, they go off to the recycling, um, center as well. We don't get credit for those, but the kids are in the habit of they're not throwing that stuff in the garbage anymore. So, a huge, a huge thing, a nice dent in, um, just looking at what our environment's about. So, just some updates, because we only have a couple more days. We are currently in second place out of 77 schools in New York State. We have raised, as of 3 o'clock today, 1,155 dollar, or no, 1,155 dollars and 85 cents. Hannaford will give us 578, because it was 50 cents for every dollar. So we're at 1733. Currently, we're in for a second place. So if we stay in second place, we win another thousand dollars. So 2,700 dollars is a pretty nice, um. Yeah, so, and then we did not do this this year, because this is obviously our first year doing it. And I'm actually gonna, I'm calling on the community to see if anyone can help me with this, cause this is my idea for next year. Um, they give you an environmental impact that you can share with the students, like on the announcements each day. But I didn't do it, because I didn't think our students would know what a lobster trap was. So they tell you, you have diverted enough containers to fill 241.9 lobster traps. I thought that would fall short on our kids, because they don't see lobster traps. So if anyone has an, an ability to get a lobster trap, I'd love to put one in the lobby next year, fill it with bottles, so kids get an idea of what that looks like. But the other things that we noticed on this site, um, as of today, we've saved enough energy to light 27.9 light bulbs 24 hours a day for a year. That's huge. Um, and that's something that I think they can get behind. The other one, they might not know what emissions are, but we have saved the emissions equivalent of driving a car 5,280 miles by all the bottles that we've gone on. So, some interesting things, and I, I'd like to do something more with that, uh, when we roll it out next year. And just a big thank you to everyone who has clay. You have till Friday morning, when they pick up at 10 a.m. I will come and pick up your bottles. I don't think we're gonna beat Shenandoah, Shenandoah is literally double where we are right now. But, we don't want Loudenville to catch up. They are only, um, 138 dollars behind us in bottles. So, we can't allow it. Literally, I would drink bottles all week there. So, it's interesting though, I, I made that announcement, we were, I think, 64 dollars ahead yesterday. And today, the number of kids that came in with water bottles, and they're like, calm down, we don't need you to get sick.
Drink up, very tiny.
But, drink up, drink to clink. Any questions?
Well, these type of competitions, I mean, it really is dark, dark at the top though. So, thank you for Mr. Fisher and Dr. Rata, because it really, you know, to generate that kind of energy, you need the leadership.
Alright, thank you.
Certainly, I appreciate it, I know from my stance, I hear about it every day in terms of what's going to happen. Yesterday, she came home, I forgot to tell you, we're in second place.
That's great.
So certainly, she called all of our relatives yesterday, getting all of their returnables.
Real proactive show.
It does, yeah.
When we were in 6th and 7th place, we weren't showing up on the main grid. So we weren't letting, we weren't saying anything, we were just, keep, keep going, keep going. So, once we got into the top four, then they, they really got serious, so.
And I think it's much more than that, like you said, I mean, environmental impact overall. I mean, every time we do something now, she's like, let me see that. What'd you, what'd you do with that? You, you weren't supposed to put that there, you know? So I think it's just overall impression on the kids.
Stomach are going into the garbage cans, when you go to the, pump your gas. Pumping gas, and I saw all these cans in the thing, I'm like, oh, I wanna take them. I didn't take them.
No, but we were at Lakeside Look this weekend, and they started talking, and they knew what to do with the recycle. So she gladly took their whole container of recycle.
Well, interestingly, we have, we have students that have gone to soccer tournaments and, and cheer competitions, and they bring a bag, they come there, can I get a bag and go over to competition? And they come back with a whole bag filled.
Yep.
So, I had kids at the concert the other night, running around saying, I've got all these bottles, what am I doing with them? Been, been a lot of fun.
Thank you, Joel. Interestingly enough, I just read this brief article, they found a whale, and they dissected it, it died. It had 100 pounds of plastic in it.
But did it have a lobster trap?
It just shows you what that impact is, and what a project like this can do to, to mitigate that, so. Uh, the only thing I wanna add is, I wrote in here about the music program and how amazed I am of every time I hear them play at the level that they, um, achieve. And Mr. Rizzi, our band director, came up to me today lunch, and he said, Mr. Russell, I picked a piece that's at least two steps up from when the last, the last one we did. I just looked at him, and he goes, I think they can do it. And I'm like, that is how we achieve greatness. You don't achieve it by shooting down here, you shoot up here, and you challenge them. And I walked into the band today, into rehearsal, and I, I looked at him and said, the only way you're gonna do this is if you go home and practice, and you're gonna sound great, and it's gonna be amazing. And you need to get to it, just like anything else in your life. If you wanna do it, you've gotta go for it. Right? And you, and they sight read that piece, and I was just sitting there listening like, that is amazing where they started that. So, um, and to watch that progress is just amazing. So I just wanted to throw that in. Any questions about, I talked about.
Kudos to Mr. Rizzi, because, A, we know the middle school's a large band. And they're all have great participation, but it's a large band, and I think I was sitting close to Camille. People knew that that was not an easy piece, and they sounded great.
They sounded great. I was, I was amazed. And it's a very short time between the winter concert and, and December, and the number of rehearsals, when you have snow days, and you've been in all this time, to get that in was, it was amazing. So, and he's, and he's retired now, so I'm like, keep going. So, okay? Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, to addition to my principal's report, in continuation of acknowledging our wonderful K-12 music program, the first thing I have to report is a high school music teacher, Dan Shaw, and our concert band visited SUNY Ulster today to work with a guest conductor for an hour-long masterclass. They left about 1:00 p.m. and they probably are still there performing with it. Dutch composer and conductor Johan de Meij joined the SUNY Ulster Wind Ensemble as a guest conductor. The performance featured works by de Meij and others. There was a Q&amp;A session at the end of the performance, or there will be. Johan de Meij currently maintains posts with both the New York Wind Symphony and the Kyushu Wind Orchestra in Fukuoka, Japan as their principal guest conductor. Johan is founder and CEO of his own publishing company, Amstel Music, established in 1989. Four local high school bands worked with Johan today, and all four have been critiqued. The high school music bands are Roundout, New Pauls, Ordees, and of course Highland. Thank you to Mr. Shaw for arranging this awesome experience for our student musicians. Also, there will be a Muntzen family fundraiser on Thursday, April 11th, from 7:00 to 9:00 p.m. in the high school cafeteria. The Interact Club, in collaboration with the Jazz Ensemble, invite you to contribute to an evening of music and community to raise funds for the family of Eric Muntzen. Diagnosed with brain cancer, stage four glioblastoma multiforme in January 2018, Eric, his wife Mickey, and the children continue to demonstrate hope and courage through their struggle. Come together with the Highland community on April 11th in support of the Muntzen family and enjoy an evening of music, desserts for just $10 per person, or $40 for a family. We hope to see you then. Thank you.
Any questions?
Thank you.
Hello. Do you have any chance to speak?
No, I don't.
Okay, directors reports. I know we have all our directors, most of our directors here. Do you have anything that you want to add to your report to the board? Is there any questions for the directors? I guess you're doing a good job. Okay, we'll move on to approval of committee on special education. To be resolved, Board of Education hereby accepts the recommendations of the Committee on Special Education according to the minutes of the CSE meeting of March 4th, 5th, 6th, 7th, and 11th. CSE, the amendment agreement, no meetings on February 13th along with the month of March 6th, 7th, and 11th. CSE meeting, no meeting, transfer in, none to report. This committee authorizes rearrangements to such student special education programs and services. Can I have a motion, please? Motion by Camille, texted by Tom. Any discussion? All of the favor?
Aye.
Oppose? So carry, approval of committee on preschool special education. Be resolved, Board of Education hereby accepts the recommendations of the Committee on Preschool Special Education according to the minutes of the CPSE meetings of February 13th along with the month of March 6th. CPSE amendment, no meeting, month of, none to report currently. CPSE, no meeting, transfer in, none to report currently. Committee authorizes rearrangements to such student special education programs and services. Can I have a motion, please? Motion by Camille, second by Ed. Discussion? All of the favor?
Aye.
Oppose? So carry, under personnel, take personnel as a block from A through D. Is that okay? No exceptions? Okay, can I have a motion to take the personnel as a block from A through D? Motion by Heather, second by Tom. Discussion? All of the favor?
Aye.
Oppose? So carry, first and red.
All right, so last week on Wednesday, the high school fed challenge team, we took down to New York City. And it was a difficult competition. We, we presented in front of two different judges at the Federal Reserve, and it was, I've done it for three years, and this year was by far the hardest. The judges, um, did not necessarily agree with what we presented. Uh, but we are still awaiting our score, but we know we didn't make it to the semifinals, which is kind of disappointing, but I know our presentation was the best that we've had in years. Um, there were several assemblies on Monday of last week, um, where students got to hear about internet safety. And I really didn't hear much from the older grades, but I know it definitely impacted the younger grades. Um, as they were saying how they reconsider what they did online and how they acted towards, like their classmates and other people that they necessarily haven't met, that aren't friends with. So I thought that was, um, a really great step because it really starts when they're starting that transformation from middle school to high school, because that's, I feel like, when most kids get involved online. Uh, there was also an ice skating trip where students went to solve mysteries, and some students learned how to skate while others just went to skate. And I feel like that's a great time to learn how to deal with others while some are more advanced and others are just starting out. Um, other than that, spring sports are in full swing, and I know the girls lacrosse had a scrimmage today. Um, and I just want to wish them all good luck throughout their season. And finally, Mr. Zimmer talked about it. Interact is teaming up with a few individuals and putting on a dinner for the Muntzen family. They are a great family, and I just feel like they deserve all of the support that our community can offer. So, it would be great to see you guys there. Any questions?
Thank you. Okay, other business and operations, our health and welfare contract. Be resolved, Board of Education, on a recommendation, the superintendent approves the 2018-19 health and welfare contract for 36 students at cost of $304.38 per student, a total of $28,957.68 with the Arlington Central School District authorized with the board president and district clerk to execute the contract. Can I have a motion, please? Motion by Mike, second by Camille. Discussion? All of the favor? Oppose? So carry, be resolved, Board of Education, on a recommendation, the superintendent approves the 2018-19 health and welfare contract for one student at cost of $1,274.14 per student, for a total of $1,274.14 with the Valley Central School District, and authorizes the board president and district clerk to execute the contract. Can I have a motion, please? Motion by Mike, second by Heather. Discussion? All of the favor? Oppose? So carry, be resolved, Board of Education, on a recommendation, the superintendent approves the 2018-19 health and welfare contract for three students at a cost of $901.1 per student, for a total of $2,070.3 with the Sogardie Central School District, and authorized the board president and district clerk to execute the contract. Can I have a motion, please? Motion by Mike, second by Camille. Discussion?
Can we just explain what these three motions were before we go down the list of the three?
So this pertains to those Highland students that attend non-public private schools in each of these school districts. For example, Sogardie's Woodstock Day School lies within Sogardie's boundaries. We have three Highland students that attend that. Sogardie's is responsible for providing, um, speech-
Nursing.
Nursing, social workers, et cetera. So, that's what the billings are.
And then we have to reimburse them for that proportion of the cash.
Any other questions? All of the favor?
Aye.
Oppose? So carry, budget transfers be resolved, Board of Education, on a recommendation, the superintendent approves the following budget transfers for 2018-19 school year presented to the board at this meeting. Number 7296, 187,000. Number 7303, 80,000. Number 7305, 55,000. Number 7153, 56,000. Number 7525, 120,000 dollars. Can I have a motion, please? Motion by Heather, second by Ed. Discussion? Everybody understanding the budget transfers? All of the favor?
Aye.
Oppose? So carry, cooperative bidding resolution. Whereas it is desired of the participating school districts of the Board of Cooperative Educational Services, Ulster County adopting this resolution to jointly request bids to certain commodities to be determined by the superintendent of this school district from time to time for 2018-19 school year. Be resolved, the Highland Central School District hereby agrees to participate with other school districts of the Board of Cooperative Educational Services, Ulster County, New York, in the joint bidding of commodities to be requested by the school district purchasing agent and approved by the superintendent. Be further resolved that the specifications that prepared by the steering committee of participating school districts and presented to this Board of Education be used, and that this board, if it desires to purchase these commodities, agrees to purchase said commodities at the lowest bid price recommended by the steering committee of the joint school districts, provided however that each participating Board of Education and exercising its legal responsibilities have the right to reject or modify the recommendation of the steering committee awarding of the bid. And be further resolved that the invitation to bid will be advertised by both using the Kingston Daily Free and the Middletown Times Herald Record and the Poughkeepsie Journal in accordance with provisions of section 103 of the General Meanus of Volts Law. Can I have a motion, please? Motion by Heather, second by Ed. Discussion? All of the favor?
Aye.
Oppose? So carry, Columbo contract, discussion. We had some discussion in executive session regarding the contract. We'd like to move that forward this evening. There was some areas that were modified based on the Support Services Committee and the, our legal counsel reviewing the entire contract, making some changes. That went back and forth with Columbo, and everybody is in agreement with the contract. We did earlier extend the completion date from 24 months from a date of contract to 26 months, which I feel should be sufficient to, um, complete the project. Barring any unforeseen with SED, but we were doing expedited reviews so that should speed up that process. And the project really is going to, hopefully, with the timeline, we did this fall or early winter with commencement in April or May with the outside work and whatever interior work would be of June, July, August, with the completion of November 2020. And this contract will run to around April or May of 2021. Yes?
Yes.
Okay?
Not specific to the Plumb though necessarily, but, um, the last presentation we had, there were some concerns over the traffic flow.
So the Support Services Committee met. We discussed those concerns. And then Mr. Miller and Mrs. Jalek, and I was scheduled, I was out for the family. Mrs. Jalek and Mr. Miller met with the architect and the team, and they are, you know, working on all those corrections or modification that we want. Yep?
Mr. Miller, do you have any, you know, just a quick snapshot of what we're doing now as of reconfiguring from the last presentation, what we're doing a little bit more in the front?
Yeah, the, um, the configuration is to go back to having student drop-off in the front, not going through the back parking lot. But what the architect's doing is they're laying this out in the front, so we'll have a separate school bus drop-off point. And then we're gonna have a drop-off point for the parents with their students with parking for vehicles. It'd be a two-lane configuration. Everything meets and goes back out down by the softball field. In conjunction with that, just in case, as kind of a relief for that, is if that becomes a queue problem with the roadway, there'll be some kind of a continuation of the original design that is a possible stopgap for that that goes through the parking lot, just in case that becomes a problem. I don't think it's gonna become a problem, but they're kind of laying it out so that it kind of can be an either-or type situation. As I suggested to them, if it got to the point where we figured out that we were having a problem with too many cars in the front, and I don't think we will, but if we have too many cars in the front, we may have to go back to a dual entrance situation just to solve the problem with traffic and interfering with school buses and stuff on any color.
So do we think it's not, it's less of an issue because you have the two lanes?
I think it's less of an issue because of the two lanes, which they were adamantly against.
And then just sheer volume.
Yeah, they were adamantly against it because of the thing, but I think because of the people walking through cars and things. But I think that people adapt to that, to, relatively responsible, because we watch them what they do back in the back of the high school. You know, they kind of, it's kind of the same kind of thing. It's just not designated as lanes. So there's, there's a tentiveness enough that they're, I don't think they're gonna have issues with that. And it allows to probably put 30 to maybe 50 cars in the queue at a time, which we don't typically have that because we have a lot of kids that are dropped off early, you know, around 7:00, 7:05, 7:10. And then they're, then you start to get the crunch of the last minute people that are coming at 7:20, 7:25. And I think you have about 100 cars or something coming here a day, so I don't think it'll be a real problem.
Currently, students use two entrances, back and, and front. The plan hopefully is that they'll all use front entrance only unless we join into some difficulties.
So student, student driver will still park in the back?
Student drivers will park in the back, and they would still, it'd be anticipated that they still walk to the front. If a relocation of who's parking where in the parking lot might take effect because now the kids park over by tennis court, they'd probably end up parking here and teachers would park closer to the building.
Like in the morning, right? All the doors are open, you come in, but then during the day, no?
Two doors are open in the morning, the front door and there's one door by the cafeteria.
Oh.
That we have staff standing there at the door, so there's two, two means of entrance in the morning.
That's it.
But going forward, the goal would be one.
The goal would be one.
Correct.
Okay, um, here, that's the update of the project based on, and bringing our structure manager on board now. Hopefully, we'll be able to do constructability of the documents that our design team puts together and kind of puts a plan together as far as estimating and timelines and how they want to break the bids down and so forth. I'm gonna assume that we do have some exterior work, and hopefully, you know, that might go first. And of course, it's gonna be the first one to start work early spring, weather permitting. They might be able to do some of that work. So, with that being said, we'd like to approve this contract this evening so they can get on board. And they have been working currently, you know, with the design team in the district, but we want to bring them on board.
I'm comfortable making the motion to approve the contract this evening. And a special thank you to the facilities committee that I know continues to meet and puts a lot of time into this stuff. So, motion.
Here we have a motion to accept the agreement between the Plumb group and the district. And reviewed by our legal counsel and everything should be in order. It was seconded by Camille. Any discussion? All of the favor?
Aye.
Oppose? So carry. Okay, project discussion, revision?
So tonight, we're going to look at our first review of expenditures, just very briefly. We're still early in the process, and we'll get that right away. The public should be able to have copies so you can rest around. Again, this is all done with the kids in mind, the children. That's why we're here, okay? So just to recap of where we are along the budget process. The governor prepared his executive proposal, February 19th. We reviewed state aid and our initial revenues. On March 1st, I submitted the tax calculation to the state. On March 5th, we reviewed a transportation proposition. And we also reviewed the administrators' proposed budget, basically the wish list on the long-term plan as Mr. Vaughn, Julie referred to it. Tonight, we're going to have our first review of the 2019-20 budget, where it stands right now. So we're going to review first the revenue. I'm going- I'm going to keep bringing the revenue forward to you and if there's any changes, I make them in bold and then you're going to see the first graph of the budget. Okay, I won't touch this. Thank you. Okay, so right now, this is the revenue that has been brought forward to you. I hold the state aid because I'm hoping that at some point the district will receive an increase in state aid. The senate and assembly both presented their budgets and I'm sure you've read the newspapers or heard that they are very far apart, the senate, assembly, and the governor on the revenue expectations for the state budget. Also coupled with that, we know that President Trump has presented his federal budget and there are cuts to education spending that are significant. How will that impact Highland? That will directly impact our federal grants. But again, it is too early to tell. So just a heads up where all the players are in this mix. The state is concerned about the federal cuts, obviously because the state relies heavily on federal funds to fund education. I'm sure you've heard ESA and all the new requirements with ESA. I believe the state has not met the federal expectations with ESA as far as special education is concerned and apparently the regions have requested a reorganization of the special education office. That's what I read this morning. So if we see an April first state budget, I'd be very surprised just because we're so, the state is in so much flux. Also on the table at the state is the New York City Transit and the governor initially proposed funds to fix the subways in New York City and also to legalize marijuana within the state. I believe those three things are going to be coupled and once they have agreement on all those three items, we'll have a state budget. The governor needs the revenues from the marijuana sales in order to fund the subway system in New York. That's just Lisa Gillette's. That's my prediction in my crystal ball. That's what's going to happen. I don't think we'll see a state budget probably until May, April, and the May. So we're going to have to sit tight with our federal, state revenue estimate and we pay close attention as to what's happening at the federal level. As you know, we apply one point five million dollars in fund balance. That's a, that's a lot of money for a small district to apply and my goal for a long term planning would be to get that number down, but certainly right now this is not easy to do that. I reviewed the calculation for the tax levy and that increased slightly. And what happened was I received the principal and interest on the bus bond anticipation notes and they included the proposition of the four hundred and fifty thousand, so we'd be making our first payment next year on that. So that helped with the tax levy calculation. So our bottom line revenues look at forty-four, three ninety-seven, five eighty-five, okay? That's a pretty good number without that. I feel very, very ninety-nine point nine percent comfortable with that number with accepting of that, okay? All right. Here's your first look at your expenditure side, okay? This is your existing budget. Right now, this is the estimated budget and the third comma or the fourth comma, excuse me, is the difference. As you can see, the big difference is debt service. Or, oops, oh, I'm sorry, I'm judging it. We're losing reven- revenue due to building aid, but we also have the debt that came off the books this year. Unfortunately, there are increases in other ones and again, I feel about sixty percent comfortable with these numbers right now. From here down, I feel comfortable. I feel extremely comfortable with the debt and the benefits. I have still to finalize these numbers up here where I'm ninety-nine point nine percent As you can see, the expenses in general support, which is Board of Education, finance, operations and maintenance, legal, and property casualty liability insurance, right now we have a budget difference of two hundred and forty-two thousand. Instruction, teaching regular school, teaching special school, athletics, libraries, computer science, an increase of six hundred and thirty-five thousand. And that's good. That's where you should have your increase because that's why we're here, right there. Instruction. Pupil transportation, there's a slight increase and part of the reason is I'm reconfiguring how we budget for our secretary, our clerical personnel that are in the elementary school, the middle school, and the high school, who deal with transportation on a daily basis. Part of their salary can be allocated to pupil transportation and receiving aid. So I'm working with the principals as to their staffing and what percent of time those folks spend with transportation. So this has yet to be defined. As you can see, the bottom number is a difference of four hundred and seventy-three thousand one fifty-nine less. That's good. Next page. However, we're not quite there yet. Our revenue was forty-four, three ninety-seven, five eighty-five. From the previous page, our proposed budget is forty-four, eight oh seven, six ten. The difference is four ten oh twenty-five. That's the difference I need to hone down within the next month before the board accepts the budget. Hopefully, the district will receive more in state aid and again, I'm further reviewing the expenditures on general support, instruction, and transportation. Okay? So here we are, we're at March nineteenth. Lisa is going to advertise the first legal notice somewhere between April fifth and seventh. April first is the New York State budget deadline. I'd like to take a bet as to see if that will happen. Your next Board of Education meeting is April second. It has your adopt budget and property tax report card. You don't have to do it on that date. You can probably adopt it at a different date if the board so chose. The last date that you can adopt the budget is April twenty-fourth, okay? And that's where we are in the process. Does anyone have any questions, comments, concerns, too long, too short?
More of a comment, I would be interested in talking in the future about how to reduce that amount of appropriated need budget needs, yeah?
That would be an excellent topic for the fall. Once the audit is completed and our state aid is submitted, we can begin that long range financial planning as part of either the audit committee or collectively with the board. I'd be more than happy to do that in September auditor.
Question though, and I'd most likely be my own one on the topic until then, is if there's an increase in foundation aid, does that provide an opportunity to look at that?
First, we have to close that four hundred and fifty thousand gap. Yes, we can use a foundation aid to look at closing the gap and also decreasing the appropriated fund balance of one point five million. Yes. My primary concern is closing the gap right now, making sure I go pound it for all of our needs as a district and then see where we're at with additional state aid. I know that both the senate and the assembly are pushing to increase foundation aid as to where we should be receiving it. I hope there'll be enough revenue to complete that task at the state level.
Lisa, with all that being said, I know we have our next meeting on April second. What I'm hearing from you is that you anticipate budget before April first or on April first, you're expecting, hopefully that budget, or that budget might come in towards the end of April. Do you have enough time between now and the April second meeting to review those three line items that?
Absolutely.
With the expenditures side, that we can still have that meeting and be productive as far as budget discussion.
I have sign, a sign on my door that says it's budget season with a really nasty looking face on it, so I'd block that entire day, you know, please, you know, unless something's going to have a crisis, unless my son has car accident.
We don't receive an updated budget at that point at the state level, you know what the full anticipated aid would be in full play.
Correct.
And then you're going to have to do another readjustment.
That's correct. And the board will have options, obviously, on how to do that, what they would like to adjust, so.
The eight million dollar voter approved project that we're going through right now, when does that launch at that surface?
They're included in the nineteen twenty budget is a note, a capital note, the principal and interest on that note, maybe three hundred and fifty thousand dollars to pay for anticipated expenditures. Don't forget the board or the voters appropriated four hundred thousand out of the capital reserve and four hundred or four twenty-five, I can't remember. And right now, that's the money that we're relying on. So the actual borrowing will obviously be seven point five million and change.
Twenty twenty-one, did you hear the words?
Yes, yes.
And a current seventeen five, seventeen million, seventeen point five million dollar project, is that completely closed out into the book?
No, that is not completely closed out.
We're not, we're not up in Oregon yet, in fact.
We are with about a third of it was completed in June. I believe we can complete like another small piece of it, but we have a contractor that has some issues and we are working with our attorneys to address those issues.
So that, that's got some effect because you don't have some of that.
That's correct. We do not have any building aid.
That statement we're, we're getting.
We will be getting. I would count on that in twenty twenty-one. Honestly, twenty twenty-one. They won't, even if we have, hopefully we will have it up by June thirtieth as much as we can, that aid will show up the following year.
Help to buffer your debt.
Twenty twenty-one. Yep. Okay, so that's where we're at.
I understand that you're here.
Thanks, you're very informative.
Yes.
Okay. Very brief PowerPoint for transportation. This is updated from the March fifth meeting. At the March fifth meeting, we originally proposed three thirty passenger buses to seven passengers and one wheelchair. As you can see, the two wheelchair buses are highlighted, the committee members, myself, Mr. Miller, Kathy, and Don, D O N, Don, right?
Don, David.
Don, I know, it's my Massachusetts, sorry, Don and Don.
Maybe you can give me that lobster crab.
Maybe I can. So the committee reviewed the, the outstanding, or excuse me, the equipment listing, the transportation equipment listing. And we all sat down and we're all like, okay, how can we come up with a plan? And I have to commend Mr. Miller and Ms. Kathy and Mr. Don for assisting in achieving a very, a great plan going forward. It's not as long as I thought it would be, but I'm very, very happy with what we accomplished. So anyways, enough said, Lisa. We changed it from one to two wheelchair buses. We feel very comfortable with that recommendation. It includes all safety and communication equipment, so we're recommending that the total for the proposition is four fifty, two forty-six. And as I indicated previously, I did include some debt service, just a little bit in the nineteen twenty budget for that. So we get, we'll be on cycle with our buses. We'll be making payments and receiving aid. It's a beautiful thing that works, okay? And this is the proposition, same language, hopefully as what is in your agenda. Thank you.
Does anybody have any questions on the bus proposition? Can we move that forward this evening? Okay. Thank you, Lisa.
Thanks. Thank you.
All right, now we did our budget discussion, bus proposition. We've resolved the Board of Education upon the recommendation of the superintendent, includes the following proposition to be placed in the ballot at the annual meeting of the qualified voters of the Highland Central School District, conducted on May twenty-first, two thousand nineteen. Proposition reads, shall the Board of Education and a Highland Central School District be authorized to purchase the following vehicles, including incidental safety and communication equipment in connection therewith for a total estimated maximum cost of four hundred and fifty thousand, two hundred and forty-six dollars. Three thirty passenger buses, two seven passenger suburban vans, two wheelchair accessible vans, which total estimated maximum cost of four hundred and fifty thousand, two hundred and forty-six dollars, or so much thereof as may be necessary to be raised by the levy of the tax upon the tactable property of said school district and collected in annual installments provided by section four one six of the education law in anticipation of such tax obligations of this district be issued. And be it further resolved that the school district clerk is hereby authorized and directed to publish this proposition in the legal votes of annual meeting, election, and vote in the designated newspapers. Can I have a motion, please? Motion by Tom, seconded by Ed. Discussion? All over the favor?
Aye.
Close? So Carrie.
Thank you.
Sarah is not here this evening. Superintendent?
Yes, thank you. So again, I know we've said it several times, we can just, special thanks to our students in the bands, but certainly led by Mr. Short at the high school, Mr. Rizzi at the middle school, and Mr. Adler at the elementary school. It really was a great concert, flowed so smoothly. It was very, very enjoyable. So an update on voting, so Mrs. Sernigle has been working very hard on this, so I do want to thank her just for the public that, you know, there was an issue this year really due to the Ulster Board of Elections. They weren't going to let schools use their voting machines. It was mostly because they wanted to force schools to close school on any days where there's voting and that's very hard for school districts to do. Now, here in Highland, we have, you know, a unique situation that one, we only have one voting place, which is here at the high school. And secondly, we have a separate entrance for voters. Many schools do not, so, you know, they didn't want their, the voters going through the schools. This is a board of elections. But here, it doesn't matter. We just have the one that go in, they go out, and they don't ever interfere with students. With that- With that, though, really, just until about a week ago, it was still, school districts were scrambling on what they were gonna do. And really, if you asked us three weeks ago, we were being told we had to use paper ballots. But with Mrs. Sernigle's hard work, uh, the board of elections is going to let us use machines. So we always, just have two machines, we'll have two machines. Um, uh, one thing, though, just because of, you know, some of these changes, and they have to go to, you know, go to schools, the, we wanted just to talk to the board about the times, okay? It is tough for the key master to get here. Um, most schools don't start at six AM. Um, they start at least at seven AM. Um, now, we have a, uh, we have a, a log here from two thousand and thirteen. Between six and se- we, we open at six, and we're open till nine PM. Since two thousand and thirteen, we had zero people who voted at six, between six and seven AM. They start voting between seven and eight AM. So we wanted to, Mrs. Sernigle, I wanted to kind of present it to the board. If, you know, that would certainly would be easier on our custodians and everyone else that have to donate, get here so early to open it all up.
You sure that's true?
I'm really not sure. I voted, I voted at six AM. I don't know if it was recorded exactly. Yeah, that, I don't know if that's.
I don't believe that's accurate.
On two thousand and thirteen?
No, for any.
Who gave me this report?
Yeah, I did, I did, yeah. Yeah, I did. But two thousand and thirteen, I don't know if it was actually, like, if we manually recorded it then, but they count from, was it fifteen, sixteen, seventeen? Like, those are the actual.
Okay, from since two thousand and fifteen, then?
Yeah, I use those numbers, right, in the first one, yeah. It's average about twenty.
Oh, okay.
Okay, if I'm not mistaken.
Yeah.
Right?
Yeah.
Okay. So that's about an average. So, yes, there are a few. Um, all the school districts in the neighboring districts, except for Marlboro, although I did find that out. They are changing the times because the key masters have to be provided by the board of elections. That's something that we cannot, um, hire. So as a request of the board of elections, they said, you know, the other schools are all changing their times, and that was a message that I was.
Can we change?
Pass it, which, of course, you know, as, as the district clerk, I mean, too, I mean, I support that. But, um.
It says.
Yeah, so that's, so it's a matter of the key masters having to be here at, pay, you know, by five in the morning, basically, get the machines all set up, get everything organized, as well as with the custodians, because they have to let them in. Um, so I don't know what time your custodians generally start, but they would generally have to come in by five AM. So it, it's just the whole, you know, the normality of it all.
Seven to nine PM.
So just to see, yeah, discuss to see what you think about that.
Do the key masters get paid?
They, we pay them.
We pay them.
We pay them.
They're, they're local individuals, correct?
They have to be, um, a Highland, um, member. However, if they are not, they cannot find anybody within Highland, they are allowed to go outside of Highland. So they have to find a key master that is certified with the board of elections, that lives in the district, but if they can't, then they have the permission to go outside the district.
I guess my take on it, if, if they're not complaining and you're not complaining, why are we looking to change to?
Well, yeah, and that's, Tom and I had spoke about it, and this is something that's the commissioner, Tom, his name is also Tom, wanted, right, not, that's this Tom, Tom Turco, Turco, right?
Turco.
Right? Um, a message, you know, he had a few of his requests.
Is some of the board of elections is actually asking for, or?
Well, they're asking, why are we opening up at six? That's basically was the question.
To allow parents who are commuters and leave are very early the opportunity.
But we're open from nine as well. And my, my only position on this is if, it sounds like the relationship was tenuous at best, whether or not they were making the machines. And if they're asking us to do this, I would be inclined to try and skip an hour.
But, you know, I mean, basically, um, the legal notice will be going in, you know, around April second is the date, once legal reviews it, and just has to state in the legal notice what time our polls are open.
So they don't want to prevent anyone from going?
Right, and that's the thing. I mean, um, if there are some voters in the district that count on that six AM, which is about an average of twenty.
They could do absentee ballot as well, could they not?
Um, okay.
Take the visit right out of it.
I think it's definitely advertised, that we have to, I mean, make it up, make a well-known.
Right, because it's on the calendar.
So that's, um.
Yeah, they think every other one, because every other vote open at six?
Why change it?
Yeah, why change it now? I mean, for next year, at least we can put it out there earlier in the budget calendar and such, and we can decide to change it.
Yeah, who knows what's gonna happen, you know, next year with these Scantron machines and.
Buy our own.
Oh.
We can. Very expensive.
Very expensive.
Five expensive things all the time, you just bought five buses.
Well, we'll put it in the budget.
Is it more expensive than five buses?
No, no, it's very expensive. Mr. Bonjoelbe in the house.
No, no, so we'll leave it at six.
Yeah, we'll leave it at six, um, but at, at least then we can say that we had discussed it.
Yeah, we have discussed it. We think we would discuss it.
Right. Thank you, okay.
And we mentioned we look forward to doing it next year, but we have advertised the way it is.
Yeah, sounds good.
And this, this is not key master, it's not the same for most of us.
I just want to, I guess, because they work in machines and now they are. I just wonder, should we keep a good price?
We're concerned after that.
Okay, uh.
Mr. Bonjoelbe, before we start, what if, Mr. Ferr just mentioned, what if we do an exit survey of what time do we wait for? I'm sorry, sorry, I'm going back to Mr. Ferr.
I'll talk to Mrs. Sernigle about the possibility of an exit survey.
Absolutely.
That's a great idea.
It is great.
Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Ferr.
Thank you.
Make sure the student record is available, you can't let files.
Hey, the lobster trap, I'll come sit here at six AM. And I'll ask the people between six and seven.
I was gonna say, we don't have twenty to ask, so.
That's right.
Me and my husband, we're terrible, so.
So I wanted to, uh, wanted to publicly announce that the Ulster County School Board Association, uh, Highland's Distinguished Friend of Education Award this year, uh, it was discussed among the board, nominations came in, discussed, and that is being, um, awarded to Randy Raddick. As many of you know, but for the public, you know, Randy has done just such a tremendous job with the music boosters, uh, she and her group, they are at all of our music programs, supporting our students, doing special programs and award ceremonies for our students. And, you know, one of the many, you know, it's a team effort, and one of the many, one of the reasons we have such a successful music program is because of the music boosters. So, uh, Randy, I spoke to Randy, um, on Monday. She is very excited and very proud, and thanks the board. She should have received this letter by now. Um, we have time that, this ceremony is Thursday, May twenty-third, the Best Western Plus in Kingston. So that'll be a great night for Highland. And then finally, uh, the, our mechanics, and that is Kyle Walker, Joe Robach, and Don Dibble. They had a, uh, a year-end DOT passing rate of one hundred percent, which is amazing. So they have, you know, this isn't just your typical car inspection. This is going over everything, over, over ten thousand points of inspection are done. Um, and really, it is, I thank Kyle, Joe, and Don for their hard work, and certainly, uh, thank Mr. Miller and Mr. McCullough for their work with the, uh, with the mechanics, because it's, it's a team effort. So, uh, thank you very much to everyone, and congratulations. And I finally desire, I'd like to repeat at least my recent Monday messages. So, uh, last time I asked, uh, how many languages can you speak? And most people are gonna say, you know, perhaps one or two, maybe three. Um, you know, how many instruments can you play? Maybe zero, maybe one. But again, how many languages can you speak? Now, if you change the question, how many languages could you speak? Well, you know, with, with hard work and teaching and then the right effort, you could speak probably many languages, as many people in the world do. How many instruments could you play? Well, you know, well, that's Ben Tron, you know, even his family, you know, they, they play many instruments. But, so don't limit yourself. But it takes good instruction, but then it takes the effort, the right attitude, and hard work. So not to limit yourself to just what you can do, it's, uh, what you could do. So that is all for tonight, Mr. President.
Thank you.
Yes.
With, with what superintendent just mentioned, what are our three mechanics and the rest of the department, did you think it'd be appropriate to bring them in when we do our recognition in June? I mean, a hundred percent passing rate for our transportation department. And we transport eighteen hundred students, and we transport to many locations throughout the area for special needs students, I think.
Put a hand in the back there.
I didn't want to interrupt you, but we, we will get a report from the state shortly, after April, that tells us where we sit in the state with all the districts. And there's not many that have ever pulled it off.
I think that's a great idea. We could recognize them at a board meeting.
They deserve cake or our recognition.
Right, right, recognition. That's great.
Take that letter, it's a good idea. We could do that, we'll, we'll do an exit report.
Thank you.
All right, any questions for the superintendent?
Any questions, anyone?
Any new business? Or old business? BOC's meeting is to be held on April eighth, two thousand nineteen. And they propose administrative capital and program budgets the Ulster County Board of Qualified Education, C W, available for inspection. The meeting starts at six PM, the annual meeting at six thirty. And if you'd like to go, it's, uh, your RFPs PM by March twenty-ninth.
Yeah, and that's Monday, the eighth, April eighth, is that what I saw? I'll double-check, I might be attached.
Great, okay, yes, the, the board members are encouraged as well.
For you and facility, we have a light dinner, put on by the toll, and every student.
It's gonna be held April eighth, yes.
Thank you.
I'll be there.
Several of them, yeah.
Great.
And FYI, uh, BOC's, uh, CT graduation, if you're, I think you're gonna be able to attend.
Right, I don't have an RSVP date, just keep that in mind, um, you know, when that time period comes.
Okay. Uh, I think that's all, anything for the good welfare of the district? Yes, that's another.
Do you leave the April second meeting out, the April second?
Yes.
Okay.
Uh, open the meeting up to public comment. Okay, we'll close public comment, and then to pay a motion to adjourn. Motion by Camille, is that something else?
Hey, Tom.
Yes, Camille and Tom.
Thank you.
All in favor?